Yes, adoption of the agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion by Stacy, a second by Joe. Do we have any discussion from the trustees? Seeing none, any public comment?
Seeing none.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the flag salute. Trustee, Welkum McCullough, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. This is for information only. Mr. Stokes, good evening.
Thank you, President Walker, members of the board. Good to be with you this evening. I don't have a lot tonight, and I'll be making a presentation on school reopening later in our meeting. But I did want to reach out, say hello to our staff and our students. Hope they're having a good summer. It's interesting times right now within the world of school. And we're looking forward to having continued discussions about the topic. So thank you, Mr. Walker, and I'll give you back the floor.
I think that was record-setting speed, Mr. Stokes. Next item on the agenda is board reports. And this is for information only, starting with trustee Creeny. Okay.
No report.
None for me.
Just for NASB. So I was on the Pacific Region call last week, so if you'd like to have any updates on it. Basically, Washington, Oregon, Idaho, and Arizona are facing the same challenges with trying to plan reopening, and Utah is with trying to plan reopenings that we are. Utah is lucky that they will not have budget cuts this year. However, they've had significant early retirements. So they're looking at a teacher shortage there. Most other places are dealing with budget and other things. And then the other thing that's going on with NASB is California has left, effective July 1st, the National School Board Association. That will take effect then. And also, we are looking, the Executive Committee of NASB is looking into whether or not to hold our conference that is scheduled in November at Harvey's, whether to postpone it to February, March, whether to go virtual or anything. And it's been a little tough because Harvey's hasn't been opened so that our executive director can see what possibly will be available. So if you could please report to me what you would prefer, then I can report that back to NASB. If you would be more comfortable with a virtual conference in November or what.
And that was part of the discussion, too, in the Pacific Region Executive Committee, talking about the other states. A lot of the states are doing hybrid conferences where if you want to come, they'll have that chance. That's not me. And then others are doing it totally online. So it is going to be a discussion that's going to need to be done.
So, you know, one of the questions I have, and I guess at some point we could talk about this, is if they do push it back past the first of the year, this will be year one and year three of all of our terms. So there's that mandatory training component. And possibly then that conference would count towards our credits.
Well, and we discussed this, and we're pretty sure that the November training, all new trustees, that in November still counts for that first year, even if we hold it in November. So that we still have to get the training in, whether or not we have the conference physically. Some of the concerns expressed by other counties in our state were if they're restricting travel for staff and students, they want to follow suit and not travel either. So even just traveling within state may be a problem for some of the other districts.
And Washoe made that concern, and that's Reno de Tahoe. So we can imagine what the other studies are thinking.
So anyway, any feedback you can give me, I'd appreciate it. And that's my report.
Thank you. Trustee Ramirez?
I don't have any report.
All right, thank you. And I have no report this evening as well. Next item on the agenda is association reports. This is for discussion only. Do we have any? No. Okay, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is the public comment. Comments will be accepted through telephonic participation or through virtual participation via email at publiccomment@carson.k12.nv.us. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items. And members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such a matter until the matter is placed on an agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comments, speakers are asked to identify themselves for the record. Speakers are further asked to refrain from speaking over each other if participating by telephone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, whether in writing or oral, and not simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only. Do we have any comment?
Seeing none.
Okay. Moving on. Item number seven, discussion and possible action to approve the renewal of property casualty insurance package with Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool in the amount not to exceed $744,062.75. Self-insurance bond in the amount of $5,940. An excess workers' compensation policy with Star Insurance Company in the amount of $44,201 for July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. This is for possible action. And we'll turn it over to Mrs. Sears.
Wilson, thank you. On Zoom, Wayne, can you confirm you're with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, wonderful. So we have a couple of options to discuss this evening concerning the renewal of the pool program. One of these options was developed this afternoon to look at a deductible option, which could mean a considerable amount of savings. The pool delivered an increase this year of $100,000. And I'll allow Mr. Carlson to explain a bit further where that's all coming from. And then Mr. Garavanto will discuss our workers' compensation. Wayne, if you'd like to take on the pool?
All right. Good evening. You have in your packet, and I think we were going to share a screen here to show the proposal.
The proposals are in their packet, Wayne.
Okay. And we'll just talk through it then. In the proposal, you'll see that it's fairly robust coverage. And we have retained the property coverage limits and so forth, the same as in the past. You have a $25,000 deductible, with the exception of auto physical damage, at $2,500. So that would be your share. Then on the next page is the liability coverage. We've maintained the $10 million of liability limits, except for the major sublimit on sexual abuse is $2,500,000. And then this year, we carved out to a separate form cyber risk security coverage. It was merged in with the property and liability. When we carved it out, we also enhanced the scope of coverage. And that's an effort to make things better for the members. And we continued the environmental liability as we have in the past, no changes in that. That's a separately purchased coverage. And we've continued the student accident coverage, which has a $25,000 coverage limit, which limit was increased a couple of years ago. In terms of your total cost, and this is what Ann was talking about, is we worked out an option for you for a larger deductible. I should go back and say your deductible on liability is $2,500 presently. So we've worked out an option for a larger amount. But let me give you some background about what happened in the marketplace that drove the cost increase primarily. Worldwide, the reinsurance market has been hit hard in the last couple of years with earthquakes, fires, windstorms, floods around the world. And adjacently in California, where the major wildfire occurs. So they have had to increase and tighten their coverage terms and rates. We've been fortunate that we've had a longstanding, good relationship with the Lloyds London Market. And this year, the market in general was increasing most people's coverage, their rates by 25% or more. We were able to negotiate to hold that down to about 13% on the property. So it's still an increase, but it's much lower than what could have happened. In addition, this year, United Educators, which is our primary reinsurers for school districts, they had the first large increase in rates that they've had to have in a couple of years. And it was almost 18%. And so we had a kind of a convergence of a number of factors. And it's not just your losses, but it's the losses of all the pool members and United Educators' own experience nationwide. We've had a couple of shop losses within our membership. One was yours, and one was another school district, so you're not unique in that regard. In addition, another factor driving some of the cost increase is your total insured values for property and auto physical damage went up 6%. So when you take those property value increases and you add to it the rate increase, it has a significant doubling effect. Additionally, your number of students, from liability standpoint, your total number of students went up a little over 4%. And so that has, you know, some impact on an increase, coupled with the rate increase. And we recognize that we try to smooth costs out over time. And sometimes we just cannot do it because the reinsurer pricing is something we can't avoid sometimes. So with that, what Ann and I worked on this afternoon was to look at an optional deductible. And Ann did an analysis, and I believe, Ann, you gave that analysis to the board.
Yes, it's in their packets.
And what we show in there is the difference between your current deductibles and what would happen if you took the option of a $50,000 deductible. And this shows you how much you would be paying out of pocket more than you would currently. So just looking at 1920, instead of currently paying $37,500 out of pocket, you would pay $179,663 out of pocket, which is a big substantial difference. So you can see there's more volatility with $50,000 deductible. If you look at 1819, you were out of pocket $36,920, and that would go up to $11,192. 1718, you're out of pocket $6,100, that would go to $13,900. Now, those two years were very good years. And then 1617, you had a large loss, but you also had some other losses that would have exceeded your current deductible and would increase your deductible cost from $100,000 to $171,000. So that's another year where you'd absorb more. And then going down to 1516, under current plan, it'd be $16,000. And under the $50,000 plan, it'd be $91,000. To put that into perspective, we have to look at, well, what would happen if you had the $50,000 deductible? So when we did the calculation, I looked at that loss history and the deductible change and the out-of-pocket costs and then versus the premium savings. And with the premium savings going to a $50,000 deductible, you save about $101,000 each year. And if we apply that retrospectively, for the 1920 year, it would have cost you more, at $41,000 more. But for 1819 and 1718, you would have saved $93,000 each of those years. And for 1617, you would have saved roughly $30,000. And for 1516, you would have saved $25,000. So going back and just doing a five-year average, the premium saved is $40,000, and your out-of-pocket would be saved each year is about $40,000 in out-of-pocket claims expense, assuming the prior experience was repeated in the future. So it comes out overall a potential net benefit to you over time. And the caution, of course, is you need to put aside some money to cushion, not only for the average potential losses, but also for some outlier years. So you can see out of the five years, you have one outlier year that you paid more in out-of-pocket, would have paid more out-of-pocket in the deductible at $50,000. But in the other years, it would have led to your benefit to have had it. You would have saved. And over the five years, your net savings would have been $200,000. So that's a lot of numbers, but it is a risk decision as to how comfortable you are taking that additional volatility instead of paying the higher fixed cost. Now, aside from that, I know you're familiar, and you do use a lot of our programs and services. And we have a very strong working relationship with you and your staff in that arena. And I'll defer discussing those in the interest of time unless there's questions about those. But I will mention one major effort that we've both put a lot of time and effort into over the last five years has been the school safety services, where we've done hazard vulnerability assessments. We've funded assisting you with updating those and getting your emergency operation plans in place. And we had a little side benefit that's, we invested for our members as a whole close to $600,000 over the last five years in school safety and emergency operations. And that resulted in our schools being prepared for and receiving $6 million in state Phase 1 grants and even more in Phase 2. And in your case, we spent about $27,000, and you've got about $300,000, some odd thousand dollars here. Yeah, $390,000. So it's a team effort, and we look at it as a way to help our members avoid losses. And we think it's paying off over the long term. In addition, we did the same, a similar kind of program for cyber risk. We did passive network assessments, and we worked with an expert in cybersecurity. We have seen schools be targeted for hackers and ransomware. And we've been able to head off some of the damaging effects of that if they do get in. And we've had members harden their systems to approve that. And then this year, we launched Know Before, which you are participating in, which is a training tool to teach employees to avoid phishing attacks, which is where most of these hackers get in. So bottom line is we're investing a lot in risk prevention, and it's a team effort. Your staff and ours working together with our outside advisors, where we use those, in order to keep the whole program sound. And that does help mitigate some of these rate increases over time. So with that, I'll stop for any questions.
Go ahead, Richard.
This is Richard Varner for the record. I was wondering, what I couldn't find, and I'm sure it's in here somewhere, but what would we pay in this year for a premium?
Wayne, do you have last year's renewal premium?
Yes. Last year, it was $671,239. And this year, so that would bring it up to about 15% increase, a little bit less than 15%.
Are all districts being hit with a 15% increase? Or is it a different increase for different districts?
It varies some degree, depending on what happens with their underlying exposures and our claims experience. But it's, the whole pool, as a whole, which includes all the types of our members, is about 10%. And that's again because of exposure change, property values, students, payroll, autos, and that sort of thing. So it does vary from that standpoint. But in terms of similar school districts, with the exception of a very small handful that had reduced exposures mostly, everyone had 10% to 15% increases.
Wayne, could you share with us again the percentage of property values in the pool that are attributed to the school districts?
Yes, the overall pool has about $5.2 billion of total insured values, including auto physical damage. And school districts comprise about 45% of that. Because you have large physical plants that are usually higher-cost construction facilities. And so that does it. You know, obviously, when there's a big property rate increase, it hits schools relatively a little harder than it does other types of entities just because of this values.
This is Richard again. I was wondering, maybe this is for Ann or maybe Mr. Stokes. You know, this is quite a large increase for one year, and I'm concerned about future increases if it keeps going up. I'm wondering, has a district done any comparative shopping with other insurance carriers to see if we get a similar policy for maybe a little bit cheaper? I know we've had a good relationship with Polpak, but I'm just wondering if there's been any comparison shopping done?
So trustee Varner, it's difficult to compare apples to apples. We could, at some point in the future, go out and look at other options that might be available in the marketplace. Most public entities throughout the country are either self-insured or they're in a pool. The reason being for that, that most private insurance companies pulled out of the market back in the 80s and are not willing to offer standalone first-dollar insurance policies to public entities. And so you find most municipalities are in some type of nonprofit risk-sharing pool, or they are self-insured. But we could certainly look at something, just to compare, next year. If we were to look at something like that, there is a requirement in the pool's inter-local cooperation agreement to provide 120 days' written notice of our intent to explore options.
Listen, Wayne, if I could add a comment. We go to market in London on behalf of all of our members. And London is a marketplace in and of itself. And so there's numerous syndicates that work with us. And we go in as a large buyer, you know, with $5.2 billion of property values. That's a significant buyer in the marketplace. So for the property side, it's shopped in that market. And we found that market is far more stable than any domestic markets have ever been relative to public entities over time. And on the liability side, United Educators is one of the major markets for public schools and universities across the country. And so they've been a long-term participant with us, and we have a very good working relationship with them. So from that standpoint, we collectively market for the members as a whole. And then we do something that private carriers don't do, and that is, on your experience, your liability experience, we don't tag you with big volatility. we don't tag you with big volat- volatility in the experience rating. Whether, whether rate is to go up dramatically, we cap the change year over year to no more than five percent change in that underlying liability experience. So that immerses to the members' benefit in case they have a string of bad luck. And so it allows the, the claims to smooth out over time. And with private carriers, what generally happens is it's transactional and not long-term. And members own the pool. The members form the pool through the inter-local cooperation agreement that Ann spoke of. And so whatever's in the pool is driven by the collective decision-making of the board, which is comprised of all the members. So these programs and services, like the student accident and so forth, were voted on by the members. So that's what's in there.
Now, I was gonna say that I feel like this has come up the last several times we've looked at renewing. And I think that probably for our peace of mind, we do need to have some kind of a comparison next time. Especially, we're looking at, you know, all forecasts are, we're gonna be having a downturn in our, you know, our financial forecast going forward. And we have to find a way to make it work.
I think the pool board as a whole would agree with that statement. And we'll be discussing the overall program and structure in the pool to keep it competitive for its members.
So, just a little confused. So if you could just clarify the five-year deductible comparison?
Yeah.
Is the seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, is that with our existing deductible now? Or that's with the higher fifty thousand dollar deductible?
That's with your existing deductible now.
And if we went with the fifty thousand deductible, what would be our premium?
So you should have that other option in your packet.
I didn't see it.
It's the extra paper.
Yeah, it'd be six hundred and forty-three thousand.
You have the extra paper? It's the additional information, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So what is our current deductible?
So we have three different deductibles. We have a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible on property, a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible on liability, and a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible on auto physical damage. So by taking a fifty thousand dollar deductible across the board, we could bring this down to six forty-three, one sixty, fifty-two.
So twenty-five property, twenty-five liability, twenty-five, what was the last one?
Auto physical damage.
Auto physical, okay. Um, and then just, um, for the deductible, is that each occurrence? Or is it like when you meet your deductible for the year?
It's each occurrence, yeah. There is no aggregate applied.
So if you have two instances, instead of fifty thousand, it's a hundred thousand?
But I think if you look at the um, five-year deductible comparison, you see that there is um, a majority of losses that fall under fifty.
On the new one or the last?
On the new one.
The new one, yeah.
Second or last?
And one of my thoughts is, you know, I mean, we're in, this is a really unprecedented time with liability for all kinds of things, health-related, on top of what we already are dealing with. And so, I, I mean, what's, what's the suggestion from the district staff on this? I, I think that it could end up being much more than a hundred thousand dollars if we had some high-profile problems and we're having to fork out the additional funds. So I mean, I guess, what's the suggestion from you and AJ?
Yeah, AJ, could we absorb that with the budget that we have? That's, that was one of my questions.
Thanks, AJ Feeling for the record. So going to a fifty thousand dollar deductible, we at this point could, could certainly absorb some losses there. The, in this coming year, right? My, my greater concern and, um, as to Mr. Carlson, I know is, um, such, through the recession, you know, did a lot to help, help school districts out with managing through these costs. And I, and I feel like we're, um, you know, maybe not in a such a spread, uh, you know, timeframe of recession, but certainly in a compressed, um, horrible timeframe where, um, districts are, you know, as, as kind of a pseudo-state agency looking at nineteen percent cuts that the governor has asked, uh, everyone, the agencies to plan for. And, and Mr. Carlson too, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the, the state is also, um, with the passage of Senate Bill 543, looking to change the way that school districts across the state are funded. And every rural district, save White Pine, White Pine is the only exception, is really negatively impacted to the point where you will have districts that don't have increases in revenues from anywhere from three to twenty years, uh, as is the case with Alco County School District. So there are some exceptionally significant headwinds that happened even before COVID. Um, and now with this, um, I mean, in, in my, in my estimation, the, the known of, um, having a, a lower, um, premium to pay certainly helps, one that's within the budget, um, presented and proved by this board already. Uh, another issue, um, Mr. Carlson too, I would just say from, for the speaking, from the board's perspective, I believe. And I, I don't know how this process all works, but if there were some way to move this process up so that when, when the board has to have an approved budget by June eighth of each year, and they, they have to go through the final budget process in, you know, April and May to have some of these numbers earlier. Um, and I, and I know some of these increases are relatively recent, but the last two, three years have been really significant for the district. So, you know, I, I don't know if there is a way, just given the circumstance of this year and how this has impacted everyone, if, if, if the pool could, you know, use some reserves that it has on hand to try to help districts out, or I guess government entities out. I don't know what that looks like or how possible that is. But this is, if, if there was any, any time where something like that would be appreciated, especially in this next year, if, if there was any ability to do that, I think that would help. Remember, Wilkie, going back to your question again, the, the fifty thousand deductible, I, I think is something that we could, um, we could manage for the year and kind of see what the experience of it looks like. But it's something we certainly would really have to keep an eye on because it's, um, could have, having a bad year, some bad luck could have some real impact for the district.
I just have a question with that fifty thousand deductible because that would also apply to students traveling to interscholastic activities as well, correct?
So I believe you're asking about the student accident coverage?
Yes.
No, the fifty thousand dollar deductible does not apply to student accident.
Okay, um, because I'm just, my, my thought process is, I know NIAA has recommended not busing students to sporting events and having parents drive. And I don't know if that parent driving somehow puts a liability on to the district. And that has me a little concerned because buses are a lot safer than passenger vehicles that might be transporting kids to a variety of different places.
And those types of exposures, we can address through contractual waivers and agreements that we enter into with parents that wish to transport their, their students in their private vehicles.
How much was the increase from last year? Not, not, I know this is a hundred thousand from, but the year before. How many, do you have? Because you said there was a significant increase too. I was thinking it was like fifty or seventy-five.
I think it was around fifty.
Fifty.
Maybe more, I don't recall, Ann. So if you go back.
Ann, hand him the mic.
So I, I don't have the, the exact numbers, but as I recall, um, going back to my, my first year here back in, it would have been June of fourteen that we were doing this, I think the, um, the total bill was in the, the lower five hundred thousand dollar range. So, um, in, in the six years I've been here, the, I mean, pretty significant increases. And I, I, I could be off on that a bit, but I know it was, I, I believe it was right within that, that range, um, maybe.
I have the number if you want it. It was five hundred and nine, it was five hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred and four in the eighteen, nineteen year. And, and that, again, the exposures were different. And your deductible was, of course, the lower deductible that you presently have.
And I would like to say I've enjoyed a lot of the programs that, that Pool Pack has had. I've, I've been very impressed with Jeff Kay and the programs that he's put our plans together. There are a lot of rural districts that couldn't have had that happen without Pool Pack and their help. And, and I don't want that to get lost with the, the monetary thing that we're talking about too. And I did join in on the COVID-nineteen webinar that they had, and I thought that was very impressive. Are there ways, are we using the resources that they have to the maximum that we can to get maybe that hundred thousand dollars of PD training out of it then?
Yes, we use as many of the programs that the pool makes available to us. This year, uh, we will begin using the pool's learning management system for delivery of all of our professional development. So the online learning program, uh, the, the platform that they use called Absorb, a learning management system, we will begin using that in place of frontline. So that's an expense that we used to lay out for a software license that we will no longer have.
Maybe we could just make it more knowledgeable to the staff that it doesn't have to be in a PD setting, that they can, their library is very extensive online and that it's available twenty-four seven. And that, that's part of the package that the district has is that they have those additional resources.
Anything else from Joe?
No great insight. I'm just, uh, you know, insurance is insurance. You either pay for it now or pay for it later. But given our, what we know are going to be some budgetary shortfalls, you know, for me, I like the idea of lowering the premium and, you know, rolling the dice a little bit and hope we have a, you know, an average year as opposed to an unfortunate year. But I mean, a hundred thousand dollars is a lot if you, you know, depending on positions, that's a number of positions that could otherwise be impacted. So, you know, I think we really have to look at a lower premium. And, you know, if you guys think it makes sense, I wouldn't disagree with that.
Andrew and I are comfortable with it. And I think we also are aware that it's not necessarily a long-time position, long-term position that we want to assume, that next year, given a little more time to explore these options, we might even be able to work with the pool to take the deductible down to twenty-five thousand and look at a couple of other options. But for the position that we're in at this time, this seems like a, a good, a good option. And I'm, I'm pleased that we were able to develop the option this afternoon.
So just thinking out of the box, so if we go to a hundred percent distant learning, which hasn't been decided yet, wouldn't our liability go down? Our chances of a liability would go down in that?
Well, the exposure of, of student accidents slips and falls, all of these types of things that happen on school property are, are reduced. Other types of, uh, claims might develop that we never thought about before. And in terms of health risks, uh, what that might do to our workers' comp experience is another thing to consider. That's not a part of this program. Mr. Garavento will talk to us a bit about our, our work comp program and that retention and how that might be impacted. Wayne, just briefly, uh, under the PACT program, which is their pooled workers' compensation program, if you could just share a bit about what you've been seeing in terms of COVID claims filed under the work comp, uh, program? That would be helpful, I think.
There's a statute for public safety employees that's unique for occupational disease. And so COVID fit into that statutory scheme. It does not apply to all employees, but it does apply to public safety, which is police, fire, ambulance, hospital, and hospital, those, those kind of positions. We've seen, uh, so far, we get a report every week from our claims folks, we've got a hundred and forty-five incidents. And out of those, we've been fortunate that four turned into claims. And even better news is those four wound up self-quarantining and testing negative after the self-quarantining. So there wasn't a lot of cost. But it's a very risk potential kind of thing because if someone goes into the hospital, has extensive hospitalization, there's that big medical expense. And then there's, uh, lost time and permanent disability potential. And, and those cases, if someone were to lose their job entirely, then it's potential million and a half, it's a two-million-dollar case, depending on their, um, situation, their survivors, that sort of thing. They, they pass. So it is a volatile area and we're monitoring it closely, as is all the markets that we work with.
Thank you, Wayne.
So in those situations, so what is, what would our liability be with that? With what this proposal is?
Are you referring to workers' compensation? So what Wayne was just explaining was that in the public safety arena, law enforcement, firefighters, EMS, hospital workers, those employees have more of a presumed, um, uh, an assumption that they were exposed in the workplace. And the employer is not required to prove causation. For school employees, it's not quite so easy to establish causation that they were exposed in the workplace because we don't know where they are at, what they're doing, how they might be exposed outside of school. Um, and of course, with many of them working from home, providing distance learning, we actually have a considerably reduced exposure for workers' compensation for these, um, disease claims. Does that answer your question?
Yes and no. I mean, that part I kind of figured, but I'm saying, say like in the fall, we had all the teachers report to work and do digital learning from their classrooms. And so then what's that potential liability with our workers' comp coverage? And, um, say like, there was, there was an outbreak in a school, heaven forbid, and several staff members became sick or, you know, unable to work. And so what would that look like?
So those types of exposures are covered under workers' compensation. That's where those claims would be directed. They would not be considered under your liability coverage. Uh, workers' compensation was created specifically for that purpose. So an employee's sole remedy against employer is to file a workers' compensation claim. That's what we're going to talk about next.
Okay, any other questions about Pool Pack?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So the fifty thousand dollar deductible applies to the property coverage, the liability coverage. Does it also apply to the cyber risk security coverage and the environmental liability coverage? Are those, or are those separate?
Those are separate.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me back. Happy to be here. We don't, we're not seeing the same changes on the work comp self-insured program side. The four hundred thousand dollar self-insured retention that we've had for the past as many years as I've been out here in front of you guys is a very similar price to last year. I think it's like a hundred and fifty dollars more than last year. So very much in line with how it was last year. The bond has gone up from three thousand one hundred and eleven dollars to five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. The reason why that is, is the Division of Insurance performed an audit, which they do every year. Some years they come in and they allow you to decrease the bond amount. This year, they came in and asked you increase it. But again, they'll be doing an audit shortly that will let us know. The rate for that bond has not changed. It's the same rate as it was last year. It's just simply because they've asked for a larger bond to be placed.
Before you go any farther, for those of us that don't understand insurance, what is, what are you talking about, a bond?
So you've got to, you have to file a financial responsibility bond with the state of Nevada to be, to be a self-insured employer.
So it's money we have to put up with the state? And it's called a bond because?
It's a bond because it's a financial guarantee that your, in essence, your program will do what you say it will do in kind of a nutshell. So you've got to, to file to become a self-insured employer instead of buying a product from an insurance company, you've got to post a bond guaranteeing that you're going to provide coverage for your employees that, that are in line with what the state allows for a workers' compensation program.
That's a yearly thing, and that goes to the state?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for clarification.
It's a post with the state. Additionally, the TPA administration costs, the people that handle your claims administration throughout the year has stayed flat with last year. Last year, claims were good at a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Your fund is strong and growing. And I think you're right in line to do everything that we've thought this was going to do. The costs have remained considerably less than a standard work comp insurance program. And I think it's just good news all around. You're doing everything that you need to do. You're performing well. The market is staying where the market needs to be. And it's all good news.
Thank you. Any questions?
But I do think that that says a lot about our staff and our administration and our, and Ms. Anne and the safety office. Because I don't think if we weren't doing the programs that we're doing or they weren't aware of that, that that would have been a totally different number, and we'd have more claims. So I really would like to thank the employees for taking it serious and keeping our claims down and for you guys providing that information for them and training.
Well, and also, Anne and whoever else helped you renegotiate Wayne today with, you know, yesterday when I met with Mr. Stokes, I think our conversation was, how do we sustain this? And is this going to work for our district? And so I appreciate you guys taking the time and trying to find a solution for us to make, to give us a few options tonight. So thank you so much for your hard work for that. So do we have any public comment on this item?
Seeing none.
All right. So this is for potential action.
So one question regarding the motion. If, if we decide to make a motion based on the additional information, the cover sheet for it still has the same dollar amount to seven hundred forty-four thousand and change?
It doesn't say not to exceed?
Not to exceed. So are we okay to make that motion that way? And then just say with the additional fifty thousand dollar deductible? Just so we say it correctly?
Ryan, do you think, I think we would need to give some kind of guidance.
Just want to make sure we state it properly.
Because we did have this problem last time when we approved this contract.
Yeah, and last year it had to do with enumeration of the agent's compensation. So that is correct this year. And on that note, I would also like to acknowledge Alpine Insurance and the very generous extension of their fee arrangement. For the past two years, Alpine Insurance has been kind enough to work on a flat negotiated fee basis as opposed to a commission that was twice that amount. So to answer your question, trustee Cassiope, I believe you can make a motion to accept the renewal of the pool program not to exceed the amount stated, subject to the terms and conditions negotiated.
One second. So I know Ryan's trying to jump in here.
No, I agree with everything Anne said. I would just specifically put in there that you're opting for the fifty thousand dollar deductible option. That doesn't have an immediate fiscal impact because the claim hasn't been made. And so as long as you're not exceeding the premium amount set forth in the agenda, you're fine to make a motion to approve the other option.
Just a thought, though. Could we make a motion for less than that premium amount? Because it's not, if it's not exceeding the amount in the motion, but you make one not to exceed the new contracted amount, six hundred and, what was it? Six forty-three? Could we make that motion? Because that does not exceed the amount in the, in the.
Yeah, it would just be, as Anne said, a motion to approve the renewal as presented, subject to the condition that the board is opting for the fifty thousand dollar deductible option, which will lower the premium to six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
I just would prefer the motion to have the lower, if that's what the motion's going to be, I'd prefer it to be consistent with what we posted in the agenda, but have the lower premium amount.
I'm wondering, because are we changing the terms of the agenda? If we change that amount, Ryan?
No, as long as you're not exceeding it. So I wouldn't say not to exceed six hundred and forty-two thousand in the motion. I would just say you're approving the renewal based on the option for a fifty thousand dollar deductible. And if you want the premium amount in there, you say which results in a premium of six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. And if you want to be really clear for the attorney general, in case anybody ever made a complaint, you could say which does not exceed the agendized amount of seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question, too. The six forty-three, that would not include the twenty thousand dollar insurance provider premium? Or fee, I guess?
It does.
That six forty-three would include the twenty thousand? Okay, thank you.
The cost of the pool program is six hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-two cents. The agent compensation is twenty thousand. And the total program cost is six hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-two cents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So do we have any volunteers to?
I can try. Just tell me where, tell me where I go wrong.
Be brave, Joe, be brave.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve, as submitted, the proposed renewal of property casualty insurance package with Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool in an amount not to exceed seven hundred forty-four thousand sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents, self-insurance bond in the amount of five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, and excess workers' compensation policy with Star Insurance Company in the amount of forty-four thousand two hundred and one dollars for July one, two thousand twenty, through June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, subject to the terms and conditions of negotiation, subject to the fifty thousand dollar additional deductible to lower the premium to an amount of six hundred forty-three thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-six cents.
Fifty-two cents, but.
Oh, correction, fifty-two cents.
Otherwise, that's perfect.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Joe, a second by Richard. Any discussion by the trustees? Seeing none? Any public comment?
Seeing none.
All right. Let me call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Seer. Thank you, Ryan. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And just to reiterate, for next year, especially when we have a budget and we have to do the tentative budget by May fifteenth, we would really like to have these figures before that. Not just for comparison's sake, but just to know what we're doing. It's hard enough with the state telling us without numbers. Try to control what we can. And then if you could, actually look at some of the benefits that we get through PoolPAC and put a value to that.
And I think we also requested that there's some comparison done also.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we could work with Mr. Stokes and get that done next year.
So next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action to approve the contract between Chartwells Food Service Management Consultant and the Carson City School District from July one, two thousand twenty, to June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, at a cost to the district of an administrative fee not to exceed fifty thousand dollars and a management fee not to exceed eight cents per meal with funding to come from Nutritional Fund. This was for possible action. Mr. Feeling?
Thank you, President Walker. Good evening, trustees. AJ Feeling for the record. This evening, I come to you with a negotiated contract for services of the food service management company Chartwells for the next fiscal year, school year. This was negotiated over the prior two to three weeks and was sent to the Nevada Department of Agriculture for approval. So by USDA guidelines, whatever the, what is considered to be the final document has to be sent to the state agency for their review and approval before it can come to you and be considered for a final agreement with the district. So NDA has approved the document. And in, I think every way this document reflects the RFP that was submitted as far as what we expect them to do onsite, the financial guarantee. And I believe that is really it. I guess that may, I'll just take questions and maybe I'll think of other things. But that's effectively it, is this contract for your approval this evening.
All right, Laurel?
So AJ, my question is regarding that guaranteed subsidy. Is it on?
Oh, you're just, sorry, okay.
Okay, I'll scoot closer to my mic. So I have a question on the guaranteed subsidy. Guaranteed amount of two hundred and eighty thousand. But one of the conditions that would avoid that guarantee is if there's no school closings, school closings. That sounds like I'm saying it wrong. Well, it says school closings in the thing, so, but it just sounds weird when I say it that way. So, but my question is, given the pandemic and the possibility that we may not have full-time in school like we're used to, is that subsidy already voided? Is this something that maybe we should renegotiate based on the pandemic?
Thank you, trustee Crossman. So that is a very astute observation. I, I would say it is very likely that we may end up violating one of these exceptions because of, because of what is going on. I think what is really difficult, and this kind of gets to the last item of the night, is the impact that this is having on food service programs across the country, a financial impact. Because of the uncertainty, I think it would be, it would be very difficult on either one of our parts to figure out what ultimately is the impact going to be. And so it would just, it would, I think, be a difficult effort. And I don't know how close it would be. So in the way this works is, you know, I'll take an easier example, okay? So let's say that the, so their guarantee is a loss of no more than two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And let's say that the loss ends up being three hundred thousand dollars. And let's say that there is no COVID. But we had ten school, ten snow days. And we didn't, the state didn't force us to make them up at the end of the year. We made up a couple, and that was it. And so what they would do then, coming back after the school year's over and we have final financials, we would try to, you know, in our case, we would say, well, the deficit was three hundred thousand. And they would come back and say, yes, but because there were so many fewer service days, we didn't generate any funds on those days. And I think it's a reasonable, a fairly reasonable attempt to say, look, given this situation, that was out of our control, right? The COVID piece, and that's really in the, one, two, three, four, five, fifth bullet point on ten point six. I had them add the school closings piece unless those days are made up and students have access to breakfast and lunch those days. So part of it was just, you know, look, if these, if these things happen, there would be no ability to make it up effectively. But here, as long as there are meals being served and there's a chance to generate revenue and feed kids, that it wouldn't, that would be considered, or that wouldn't be considered against us. So I completely understand what you're saying, and I would say I agree with it. But I, I think just given the uncertainty surrounding that, I'm not sure how, except for some of the generalities we have here, I'm not sure how we would work, work it with greater detail. And, sorry.
Would the fact that if it was remote learning or if it was a hybrid schedule and you don't have, you only have fifty percent of the kids there each day to buy lunch or be served lunch, if that's all, I'm guessing if we do hybrid, we're also going to have to have meals available for students who are at home those days? And is that, is that our, that's our argument? Is there, it's available to the kids that aren't in school that day if it's a hybrid situation?
So some of that, so we're waiting, I think, still to hear from USDA what they will allow us to do. So for example, the way we were allowed to feed all kids in the community for free the last three months, that was through a specific waiver they gave. We don't know if that waiver will continue or not into the school year, given some of the scenarios that may be happening and especially impacting some of the larger cities with more impoverished populations, I wouldn't be surprised if there was some type of extension or some modification, maybe. So the, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Do you remember the rest of your question, Mrs. Crossman? I'm sorry.
I guess, I'm guessing if it comes, if it comes down to where we're having hybrid in school, it's still going to have to be, it's still going to be available to the other fifty percent of the students that aren't there, right?
Right.
And that's what.
I apologize. I'm sorry, I wanted to pick up.
Might not have as many because kids aren't going to buy lunch if they're not.
Right. Until we know what the school year looks like, I mean, we've actually been talking about, and even today, just some creative ideas of what we could do. One of the points Chartwells brought up is that while they had some of their accounts across Nevada and across the country that saw a reduction in meals served like ours, Elko was kind of in the same boat as us. They were down meals. They also had some success with really high participation even during that event. So I, so I think that even for them, this was a really new experience. And so, you know, some maybe learning experiences for them that they can bring over for us. But, you know, we were talking about if, you know, let's say it is some type of staggered schedule, for example, and you have kids on certain days. Like as of right now, if we wanted to, under the current waiver, we could actually on a Monday, provide meals to go home with kids for the entire week through Sunday. Like you can do the whole week in advance. And while that may not be optimal, if you know that maybe kids are coming on a Thursday or Friday, you could make sure that when they leave that day, they could pick up meals for the weekends or even deliver them to the classroom. So I think there's some creativity that's to happen. It's clearly something we've never done before. But it's something that, you know, we're. But it's something that, you know, we're talking about and I I think very quickly there will be some best practices as to how to handle some of these situations. But I think it's really going to depend on what the school days look like. And clearly, you know, Clark County might look very different from us, might look very different from San Francisco, you know, we're not quite sure. But I will say I've been really impressed with the gentleman from Chartwell's that have been onsite so far. Their district manager, Doug Reamer, who also helps oversee the other accounts in Nevada, you know, talking about through some of this and just how they had some success trying to keep accounts up and in some areas not so much. And they're trying to figure that out, like why exactly did that happen and what was done differently? So hopefully we'll come up with some good answers. But yeah, the uncertainty is still, still there.
So on that same page, under 10.6, it says that the labor cost will not exceed. Is that the number that we had from last year?
It's, so when I do my staff costing projections, this is the number I have at that point in time for what all of our nutrition staff would cost going into the new year. So with increases and all that sort of stuff. And that number, we actually had to provide that in the RFP. So they cited it specifically pulling it out of that RFP document that we set it up in.
And I think that it's kind of going back to what Laurel was saying and A.J. was talking about. One of the things we know is food service isn't going to go away. So even in the face of school closures, the responsibility of the district to provide meals to our students in this community is, has been well documented this year. And I think that what that's going to look like, I mean, we have a great team that is looking out for our students. And so I think that, I think there's a lot of unknowns right now. So I think that all we can do is the best we can do to kind of project what it's going to look like because we're a roomful of people right now begging for information from the state so we can figure out what it's going to look like. And so I think moving forward, we just have to do our best to meet the needs of our students. Yeah, go ahead.
I just have one more question on 10.10, the humanitarian meals. I'm just wondering, in the event that the students unwilling or unable to pay for a meal that they present to the cashier, why do we have to take it away from the kid and then pay Chartwell's for it? If we're paying for it anyway, I understand giving the substitute meal if they have a negative balance. And yeah, it says to take it away and give them an alternate meal, but then we have to pay for both. So to me, I'm like, don't waste the one that's already there. Just pay them for the one. Is that?
Yeah. So I'll speak to it as well as I know. So in what we're talking about here are not, not kids that qualify for free meals, right? These are paid students. So the, I guess the first piece of it is that it is, the type of contract we have is a cost reimbursable contract. So we are supposed to end up paying, they purchase all the food and all these things upfront. We reimburse them for the cost of the food that's necessary. So that, that food in effect has been paid for already because we're buying the larger bill and we don't kind of carve that out as a separate item. Where I think you're, there is a valid point to what you're saying and not something that I came, kind of thought through, was that there is, while there, the administrative fee is set at $50,000, the management fee is on a per meal basis. And that, the way that's written, I believe it would count as a meal. That is certainly something I could go back to them with and see their willingness to change. I have a feeling they'd be pretty willing because really this doesn't happen very often in the first place, so.
You know, one of the thoughts, about five years ago, one of the things Chris Cooper came around when she started and she had us all change it so that the kids paid first. And so it was a change because it used to be that the kids would get their meals and then as they paid, they would make sure that they had the proper number of the different elements of those meals. And so by the kids paying first, they would know, the kid wouldn't have the meal and then not have the money.
Right. Well, at the elementary school, the Department of Agriculture, a number of years ago, probably four years ago, forced us to move that point of service to the end of the line, which started causing a lot of problems with that. With some turnover at Department of Agriculture, they now have gone back on that and have allowed us to move it back to the front. So that has happened, I believe, at all the elementary schools, except for maybe Frish. We're still, Frish is the one setup where we're struggling with it. But that has been the intent. If we could do it at all schools, that would be ideal. It's a little harder at the secondary level, but we have been talking about that, actually, just to avoid it altogether, so it doesn't come up.
I think there's, I think also just, there's a lot of regulations from Food and Drug Administration with leftover meals and the fruit leftover. You can't just give it out to kids for snacks. I mean, there's regulations that we don't have control over. And I think that there's probably tons of different things we could say. I mean, principals could sit down with you and tell you all kinds of things, so.
And if kids are all eating in the classrooms rather than the cafeterias, then nobody, no kids are going to be picking meals that they're not doing anyway, so.
All right. Any other board discussion, public comment?
Seeing none.
Renee? Okay. So this is for possible action. I'll entertain a motion. Make it on.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the contract between Chartwell's Food Service Management Consultant and the Carson City School District from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, at a cost to the district of an administrative fee not to exceed $50,000 and a management fee not to exceed eight cents per meal, with funding to come from the nutrition fund.
We have a motion by Dawn, a second by Stacy. Any further comment by the board? Discussion. Any public comments?
Seeing none.
I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, A.J., for your work on this. Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action to approve newly proposed CCSD policy 555, Safe Exposure to the Sun. This is the second reading, and it's for possible action. Ms. Fuson.
Thank you, President Walker, Tasha Fuson, for the record. As you stated, this is the second reading of our newly proposed CCSD policy 555, Safe Exposure to the Sun. As a reminder, Senate Bill 159 of the 2019 Nevada Legislative Session requires school boards to develop a policy regarding the use of sunscreen in schools. At the first presentation in June 9th, there was one requested change made to the policy, and you will see that in red. It's simply changing the word from provide to promote. So that change has been made. As such, I am requesting board approval of the policy as written and presented in your packet.
New discussion? Joe? Seeing none.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve June 23, 2020 as the adopted date for newly proposed CCSD policy 555, Safe Exposure to the Sun.
We have a motion by Joe, a second by Laurel. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment?
Seeing none.
All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and I think this is the speediest agenda item in the last several months. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Item 10, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Proposed Changes to CCSD Policy 212, Homework. This is second reading, and it's for possible action. Ms. Fuson.
Thank you, President Walker. As stated, this is the second reading of the changes to homework policy 212. At our previous reading on June 9th, there were no requested changes to the policy. So I am seeking again board approval for the policy as written and provided in your packets.
New discussion from the board or questions?
No.
This is for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the June 23, 2020 as the revised date for CCSD policy 212, homework.
A second then.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Lupe. Any discussion from the board? Any public comment?
Seeing none.
All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Yay, 1979 can now be crossed off the bottom. Thank you.
Scary how many of us were under that policy.
So next item on the agenda is Number 11, Informational Update on the Superintendent's School Reopening Instructional Committee for the 2020-2021 school year. This is for discussion only. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, President Walker, members of the board. I'm not sure I can compete with that last performance in terms of time and completion. Thank you, Mrs. Fuson. Appreciate your work on those policies. And to start my report, Mr. President, I'd like to just kind of identify a condition that I'm not sure folks are aware of. The governor closed the schools in the state of Nevada on March 16th. And since then, there have been nearly daily changes or modifications to the conditions and the situations. Essentially, the ability for schools to do anything outside of the emergency directive of the governor is really, we're not able to do those things. So we are bound by those emergency directives. I wanted to make that statement because as we've had our survey out, we've received a number of written responses from our community stating that they would like to see us go back to regularly held school. And we can do that as long as the governor has approved the health conditions. So while a lot of our patrons believe that we have the autonomy to make the decision whether or not or how we hold school, we still are bound by the emergency directive of the governor. Coincidentally, the governor will be speaking tomorrow. He'll make another press release. It is anticipated that we'll see additional restrictions. The Reno Gazette-Journal Today printed additional information that said the last, or the highest for, make sure I get this right, that the highest number of new cases in the state of Nevada have occurred over the last four days. And so if we are seeing an increase or a spike in the number of new cases, it probably will be a number of days while that, those new cases run their cycle and either the, well, and then we learn of other outcomes. So it's anticipated, other Western states around us have gone to full-blown requiring of the wearing of masks if we go out into the public. And so I think some of those other restrictions are going to hit Nevada just by virtue of what we're seeing in the press. So having said that, I wanted to let the board know that we have held our third meeting of our instructional reopening committee. We've got a really nice cross-section of individuals that are participating. Got some great teacher and parent perspective. And I believe at the next meeting that we have will actually have student perspective, which will just add to the conversations that we're having. Right now, from the Department of Education, school districts are being encouraged to plan around Phase 2. So what that means is that our buildings are expected to have no more than 50% of the number of students that that building is approved to hold. So in other words, we have the certain restrictions around social distancing. And so if you think about a classroom that may have, let's just use 30 as a round number. If you have 30 students in the classroom, but the students can really only be within six feet of each other, most of our classrooms are around 900 to 1,000 square feet. And we had one of our principals give us some information on Monday that said that in a 900-square-foot classroom, she was able to get about 12 students in the classroom. So even so, we're going to have difficulty taking a classroom of 30 students, halving that, and accommodating pure strict social distancing. Think about a school bus as well. We are not going to be able to, if we offer transportation as we have in the past, we will not be able to offer full-blown social distancing under those regulations or under those restrictions. And so I think that, well, I'm saying this because I think parents are going to be having some chance to think about these conditions and determine whether or not they want to have their children in these conditions where there might be exposure to other students as before and not under the current regulations or restrictions of having a six-foot distance between the students. So that will obviously change how we offer school in the fall. We have had a survey that we've put together and we've received some really good information from that survey. I didn't plan tonight to give a full accounting of the survey simply because the survey will be open for another week. On Friday, that survey will close. If anybody is watching and has not taken that survey, we invite you to please look up how you can do that on our webpage and please make sure that you provide your feedback. But it's easy to make the statement that so far, with the numbers of respondents that we've received so far, the, by far, our patrons would like to see school reopen in the fall without any restrictions and be able to carry on as before. So we're hoping that that can actually happen. But in the meantime, schools all around the state, and specifically Carson City, are planning around the current restrictions that we know about. And that will mean that we'll have to take the steps necessary to do social distancing, which means there will be some likelihood of on-campus and off-campus instructional processes. Now, that will look a lot different than what our parents and our students experienced in the last quarter of the last school year. We were able to use remote learning using our digital platform to some extent. But for our elementary students, we provided paper packets. And so what we're likely to see in the fall is that we would actually have teachers who would be guiding instruction in some way to students that may be doing their schoolwork in a remote learning format. So there's still a lot to be done. Our final meeting of our reopening committee will be held next Monday. We hope to be able to come up with a final decision as to what our next school year will look like. We also need to say that, just like in March and April, as conditions around school closures were changing daily, we're expecting additional changes to happen. For example, the governor has given notice that there will be a special session of the legislature that's due to happen towards the first part of July. We've not seen information around an agenda. So we are expecting more changes, more situations to be different that will require us to adapt to those conditions and situations.
Mr. Stokes, could I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
I know we'll be, as a board, we'll be discussing what those determinations are made next week. made next week. Is that something that the board has to approve? Or is this, this committee makes this decision and then we kind of move forward?
Thank you, President Walker. My idea would be that the committee will provide a suggestion, a recommendation. I have mapped this out so that at our first meeting in July, which will be in three weeks' time, we'll have the opportunity to discuss the potential outcome or how school could be operated. But ultimately, I believe it sends a vote of solidarity and strength if the board does put their stamp of approval and approves ultimately what is determined to be our reopening effort. So...
But he had said multiple times during the meetings that it will come down to a board record, a board vote.
I just, I just wasn't sure myself, and I forgot to ask you that yesterday, so.
And I don't think that, that there's statute that we can find on this topic. I mean, I think truly this is something that I think just by virtue of having approval, one from staff and the public, but certainly through this board, that recommends or at least recognizes the work that, that's represented in the final outcome. And then, of course, the devil will be in the details. Every day, we'll be trying to sort out how we're going to accomplish a, an educational process that is new and unique to anything we've ever done in the past. I think every day we'll be reviewing what's going on, we'll be making modifications, but hopefully not to the concept as a whole. One of the conditions that I wanted to report to the board that is showing up in the survey is that our community members have identified that 90% of those who have responded to the survey say they have strong, consistent, and occasionally strong internet access. And so that's a good thing. It means that about 10% of our families are without a strong, reliable internet source. And I believe we can work without. I believe we can problem-solve around that condition and try to work with families who may be, who may not have complete access to the internet.
But on that note, though, I was thinking, all the surveys have been done online, correct?
Correct.
So those people that don't have internet access are not able to tell you that they don't have internet access?
Thank you, Stacy.
So it could be a lot higher.
I believe we do actually have the ability for folks to use their telephones to take the survey. And so I'm hoping that that condition alone will, will bridge some of what we're talking about, but it may not.
And how would they be notified that they could use their phone?
You know, one of the, one of the things, I think, that just from my time working it as the CIT Coordinator for the state or whatever, that most, even people experiencing homelessness tend to have mobile phones. And so, I mean, we can't say 100%, and I don't have data. I'm sitting on to show you that. I'm just saying that it tends to be that most family has, families have access to at least that. And so my hope is that we've captured a handful of them. I think that using that data, though, we could start to put plans, if we know it's 1% to 5% that we're going to have to provide internet for, we could start putting a plan in place for that.
Right. I agree. I don't think it should hold up a plan, but I think that has to be one of those variables that you're looking at. It's not going to be 10%. It's probably larger.
So based on my experience, I know that many, many Spanish-speaking families do not have access to the internet. So unless the parents are informed about this survey and how they can access that survey through a cellphone, those families are being out of the participation.
Okay. But I'm just going to say, I, I received a phone call about the survey and an email from the school. So if you receive the phone call that did tell you where to go to, to access that, and then if you get your email, if you can read it on your phone, you can do the link from your phone directly to the survey, because that's how I did it.
I would imagine that phone call is in both English and Spanish. Correct?
Yes, it was.
For those trustees that are part of the committee, I wanted to let you know too that the number that I reported in terms of response from staff was way low. And so the numbers, we've heard from at least 649 staff members, and that's across the board, both certified and classified. So we've gotten good results from our staff as well. We have right around 1,000 staff members, and that also includes some of our substitute teachers. 80% of our respondents identified themselves as parents. And the numbers were quite uniform across the grade levels. So starting with kindergarten, we had around 330 parents who responded, and it stayed about like that. The highest number was 11th-grade parents, and that was 389. And again, we have put out another request for individuals to take the survey. Mr. Davis has a listserv of about 22,000 individuals, which would include not only school staff and, and parents, but also businesses and other individuals. So we're hoping that we can just keep more information coming in so that we can use that information to help drive and guide some of our decision-making. So as mentioned, our final meeting will be on the 29th of June, unless we need to come back together and talk again. June, sorry, July 14th, we would provide a draft plan to this body. And then on the 28th of July, which is in advance of the 20 days that the emergency directive requires us to have a meeting with the public and also with the trustees. There's 20 days before school opens. And by having our final discussion and plan described on July 28th, we would still meet that date. I should add here, too, that the, the Department of Education has indicated that there's a good likelihood that school districts can be considered to move around their starting date of school. So if we do need a little more time, there's a possibility that we bring that information back to this board, again, to modify the starting day of the school year. There's also been an additional five days of teacher professional development. And so ultimately, we could have up to 10 days provided to the school staff members to learn some of these new skills that might be associated with remote learning or even using some of the electronic tools, the software associated with learning management systems for both teachers and parents. So there's a lot going on, and I, I wanted to make myself available for you folks to ask any questions that might have to do with planning for the coming school year.
So just, you know, kind of circling back to what Lupe was saying, I'm sure we've posted this to the schools' individual Facebook pages in Spanish and English, I hope, and maybe we could do another blurb here before Friday and try to capture as many of those families as we can.
I was just going to say, in, even against my better interest of receiving another phone call from the school, but I think it would be good to send out another phone call to all the students that we have through, through the directory of their numbers and make sure that that includes information that they, that the survey closes on Friday and that they can access it and complete the survey from their phones, from their cellphones.
And you know, and I'm not sure why, but all of a sudden, I'm getting the robo-calls from Fritsch Elementary School again. As much as I love getting those, but, but I'm not sure that they've been sent in Spanish. And so, and I don't know that I listened the whole way through, because it's usually things that I know are coming down the road. But I, they could, and I haven't listened. I don't, I don't know how close of attention I'm paying, but I think that probably to make sure that we are including both languages in those. I know that, you know, usually Maria Tabera sits in there, and we used to do, I would do it first, and then she would do it second. So I'm sure that we have staff in all the schools that could do it, but maybe we could work with staff in some schools that don't have Spanish-speaking staff members. They could get some help.
You have to remember that staff is not in session.
Maybe we could pay them or whatever.
The message that went out was from Mr. Stokes, and there was Spanish right after it. And in fact, it tells you at the beginning, it'll be, it'll be repeated again in Spanish. So he did send that out from, it wasn't from the individual schools that I received.
Okay. So that's perfect. And then the other thing is, if we did change the start date for the year, I mean, I would hope that if that's one of the recommendations, that we start communicating that to families and staff right away so that plans could start to be made about when the year would tentatively end and start and, you know what I mean, whatever alterations would be proposed so that people could start to plan their years accordingly. I know that that doesn't make you happy, but I mean, if that's a recommendation, I think we just need to communicate that well in advance.
Yeah, there's, there's no happy or sad about this. This is just trying to get the best information, the best intel that we can get so that we can make those decisions.
Go ahead.
Jose Delphin has a comment he'd like to make. Jose, you are unmuted.
Oh, thank you. This is Jose Delphin for the record. I just wanted to let trustees and staff know that Mr. Davis has worked with the local TV stations, and I actually saw our survey announced on Channel 2 News this evening for all families to hear. So I just wanted to make that quick comment.
So that's a good point. Maybe we should reach out to the Spanish radio station and announce it in Spanish to our Spanish-speaking families.
Thank you, Jose. I know that we have other public comments, so we have two emails that I know of, so you may.
Okay. So just another clarification. The Board of Education would like us to approve a plan 20 days before the first day of school. Do they have the ability to disprove our, you know, to reject our plan, and then we're less than 20 days trying to come up with another plan? How, how does that work? Or do we not know at this point?
Thank you, Trustee Crossman. That's a great question. There are some statutory requirements for holding school, and it's typically not in the number of days. It's typically in the number of minutes that are required to be accomplished. And so I believe that it would be those statutory conditions that the trust, or that the Board of, sorry, the, the, yeah, the Department of Education would look at as a, you know, these main concepts are identified and solved by this particular district's plan. And so I think that would, those would be the conditions that they would be checking for.
Would it be the State Board or the Department of Education?
I believe it will be the Department of Ed.
So that brings up a thing that I've been, I think this time thing, I think we need to do it sooner than later. And I almost think since we've said we had to have board approval, that we might have to have a special meeting just to have that, to up that timeline. Because we're talking about, if we put out that plan, there's going to be staff members and family members that don't want to go with that plan. And we're going to, especially, and Mr. Delphin, you can chime in on this, but we're going to need to know if those staff members don't feel safe and are not coming back. And in that same realm, we need to know how many kids aren't coming back, because that, I mean, if you look, if we lose 100 kids, that's going to, it's going to be pretty devastating. And there is a movement right now in Carson, especially among the daycare people, that they're looking at, they're going to be able to get a program, they'll be able to homeschool their, the kids that they have, and they'll take them out of the Carson City School District with that. So we have to look at that so that maybe that's an option that we offer during our plan, too. So I think the sooner we get a plan together and we know what it is, and we vote on it, and you guys take it from there, we can plug in those little holes that we're going to find through the public telling us what they don't and don't like, and what staff is coming back or doesn't feel comfortable being in buildings or...
I mean, I don't disagree with you. I think that one of the things Mr. Stokes and I kind of did yesterday is kind of mapped it out with date-wise with our next two meetings and found that we would meet those guidelines. I think that we could do it tomorrow, but that doesn't mean the Department of Education is going to give us any guidance anytime soon. I mean, I think we've been sitting here and waiting for things for a long time. And so I would hate to rush the committee. I think that, but I mean, I, I don't think any of us are opposed if we needed to have a special meeting if the committee and Mr. Stokes said, I think we need to get this done sooner. I just don't know that rushing is going to solve anything. I don't think anybody on the other end is going to rush to give us any feedback or answers personally.
I'm hoping that we can be responsive to a variety of interests. For example, if the majority of our folks say they would like to come back to school with no restrictions, I think that needs to be one of our plans. But if we have to modify that to some extent based on Phase 2, and then if, let's just, let's just hope that maybe by August 1, we actually get to Phase 3. And if that happens, that would allow us to make some other modifications. But, but I think for the families like you're suggesting, that may not want to come back to school under any conditions because they're just concerned for the, the well-being of their students, we could then offer our abilities and our, our electronic systems and teacher support so that it's not just homeschooling, so that we could try using some other concept to buy that goodwill and keep those folks within the school district and, and hope for better times so that at some point, we get to this point where we're back to school as everybody knows it and appreciates it, and we can, we can kind of carry on. But I believe there's going to, we need to be as, as agile as we can in order to try to accomplish just what you're talking about, and that's not losing students.
And I'm not talking about rushing, but there are people that need to plan if they're going to come back. And Jose's going to need to know if he's losing, you know, four fifth grade teachers. And so it's just kind of, it's like you said, it could change. So, but I just wanted to throw that out, that, you know, there might be a, a time that we might have, because Washoe's meeting on the 7th and the 21st. So that's a week after, or a week before us, and there's other districts that are ahead of that. So just to keep that in, you know, the frame of mind that we are thinking about deadlines and people's commitments and their priorities.
Joe?
Yeah, I, I agree with Stacy. I think we, it would behoove us to have plans, a variety of plans, tentative plans in place, and not wait on the Department of Ed. I mean, we have to comply with what they want, but we, you know, and we're doing that. We need to have some ideas in place as to what we're going to do, because I think not only do we have to look at a couple of options, but I don't see the whole school year, or for that matter, the whole semester, going the same way. I think it's going to start off a certain way, and then once we get into the winter months, you know, Thanksgiving time, we could go from a Phase 3, whatever that means, to a Phase 1 or 2. You know, so we have to have that planned mid-year to, to change cycles.
Well, and it's very possible that this isn't a virus that matters what the weather is.
Right.
We're in the summer right now. So...
Yeah.
I think that, and you know, and I agree, I agree with everything you're saying. I, I'm just saying, I want to make sure that the committee has time to do their work. And, you know, if we need to move our schedule around, we will. But I think that another thing that I think is really important to say to the public is, I think all of us would like to be able to open school as normal in the fall. We have to make sure that we're adhering to the requirements set forth by the state and the governor, and we have to look out for the safety of our students and our staff. But I think all of us agree that we would have liked to end the year as normal. So I mean, it's not like there's a disagreement there, but we have to look at the conditions as that time dictates. So I mean, I know that we primed Renee to do public comments, so... Yeah. Can, well, let's let public comment, then you could circle back. Go ahead, Renee.
This particular comment is from Nicole Valdez. She's submitting the email with regards to schools reopening in the fall for the 2021 school year. She's a parent of an upcoming senior and an upcoming sixth grader and would like to make it abundantly clear that the remote learning which took place at... and would like to make it abundantly clear that the remote learning which took place at the end of the 1920 school year as a result of COVID-19 was a huge failure. Everyone wants to talk about how successful it was, but I'm here to tell you that I have not spoken with one single parent who thought this was a success and should continue forward. The school employees thought it was a major, major success, and why wouldn't they? They got paid to stay home and not to do their jobs while parents nationwide were forced to choose between their essential jobs, if they had one, like both my husband and I do, or homeschooling our children because the schools dropped the ball in a big way. My high schooler was given one assignment per class per week, and then I pressed the teachers about why so little work was being sent their way. I was informed that the districts told them no more than one assignment per week, per, excuse me, per class per week, so as not to overwhelm the students. I also did not have any teachers provide lessons, instructions via Zoom. On the opposite end of the spectrum, my elementary school student had his teachers hurling five to 10 assignments at him every week as if they were going out of style. Some assignments covering topics that had never been discussed or addressed. And he was essentially left to fend for himself since his school refused to conduct Zoom lessons and instructions. My high schooler had 10 minutes of school per day, maybe, and my elementary schooler was doing work on his own from eight to five with no teacher involvement. My husband and I were not able to both work and teach simultaneously, and I informed his teachers that it was not my job to do their job. And if they weren't going to do their jobs, I'd have to look for an alternative schooling options. I do not see things improving in the future if remote learning continues. It was a disaster. The parents and children alike suffered tremendously, and I'm opposed to any option other than a complete reopening as normal. Further, despite the superintendent's assertions, the governor has issued no mandatory restrictions on the school's reopening. Neither has the Board of Education.
Renee, I just want to respond to that and just say, I think that the educators I've talked to, that I've worked with, it's a mixed bag for us, just like it's a mixed bag for parents. I don't think that, I think I've had a lot of teachers talk about the frustrations with digital learning. And it wasn't, I don't think anybody has said it was a smashing success. But I will say on behalf of our employees, educational employees, our essential workers, and those teachers were working all hours of the day and night. And they were doing IEPs at night, early in the morning, well beyond seven and a half hours of their contract time. And the majority of them never complained because that's what the students needed. And so I'm sorry that that family was not happy with the circumstances. And I wish they would have reached out to their site administrators, possibly Mr. Stokes. But I want to say, I just don't want that to be said about our teachers because I know how hard they're working and I'm proud of those.
It was brought up in the committee that a lot of the teachers said, well, you know, because it just happened, there was no preparation. They've now had time to put together learning guides that, that are focused there and come up with different things where they'd never had to do that before. And then just being thrown in, they had no idea. And that was a lot of the discussion with the teachers is it'd be different this time because they'd have a plan and they know how to carry it out and they'd have the resources and the background or backup to do it too. So it was made well aware to the committee that there were some major fails. But they realize that and understand it and have put things in place to make sure that that doesn't happen if, if we end up going to that way.
And you know, and our teachers got, so Mr. Stokes got, I think he got a five-minute heads up and he gave me about a two minutes heads up. We have a press conference. It was a Sunday night and school was canceled. And our teachers were expected to turn around and have some options in place right away. And so I just want to say that I understand there's a lot of frustrations and we've talked about those. And so I don't think any of us are saying that that digital learning platform was a success. None of us are jumping up and down and clapping and so happy about the way it worked. But we are proud of the efforts of our employees. We're proud of the efforts of our students. We're thankful for the help of our parents because there are a lot of things which nobody was prepared for. And so I'm hoping that doesn't happen again. And like I said, we'd like to be back in school like normal.
Mike, if I could also, during the committee meetings, there's been a lot of talk about teacher accountability to put in something in place to make sure there's not one teacher, for lack of a better term, not doing as much as another teacher and kind of make it more even across the field. So there has been a lot of discussion about that.
Yeah, I think I would agree with that, the expectations going forward. I, I think there will be some improvements made. I think this person's email, while I understand her frustration and I'll, I'll, I'll agree with her that things, you know, didn't go as well as they could go. To say that it's gonna all go the same is just an incorrect statement. I mean, we're learning from it. The teachers are learning from it. I had two teachers in my household that probably put in longer days than they ever have. So to say our teachers were sitting around earning a paycheck, you know, it's a little insulting. And I think this person maybe spent a little too much time working and not enough time assessing the district as a whole. So we do deserve, our parents and our students deserve something more if we go to this next semester. But, you know, I think improvements will be made.
Thank you. Okay, Renee, go ahead.
Our second public comment is from Jennifer Ma. Her daughter's enrolled in kindergarten at Fritch for the 2021 school year. And she wanted to take the opportunity to express her desire to see schools reopen in the fall for regular, full-time, in-person attendance, especially for elementary aged children. I have not come to this position lightly, and she realizes that attendance is not without risks. However, given the available information regarding COVID-19's effect on young children and balancing the benefits and burdens, she thinks the best outcome for our children is in-person attendance. Specifically at the current time, it appears that the risk to children, especially children under the age of 10, is limited. To date in Nevada, according to the Nevada Health Response Data, not a single child under the age of 10 has died from COVID-19. Further, daycares throughout the state of Nevada were deemed essential and remained open throughout the shutdown with only three cases, two staff and one child, reported from a daycare setting. Finally, at this time, we are living in a community with limited cases unlike Clark and even Washoe Counties. I believe it would be irresponsible to treat our community as if we have extreme transmission of COVID-19. With the information available, it seems unreasonable, unreasonable to assert that closing schools or requiring remote education is for the benefit of our children. Quite clearly, it is possible to have in-person education if young children, without putting them in substantial risk, and even if they catch COVID-19, the risk of death is limited. Moreover, the benefits of in-person education for our children is substantial and allows them opportunities for socialization and substantial psychological benefits which cannot be accomplished with remote education. While attempts can be made to provide an education or fulfill these necessities remotely, it is simply not the same, especially for a kindergartner who lacks the attention span to spend large portions of her day on Zoom. I believe quite strongly in the importance of providing the best education possible for our children and moreover, believe that the best education simply cannot be provided remotely. Additionally, with the economy reopened, many people will not have the ability to stay home with their children and assist with remote education. Accordingly, for many children, including my daughter, they will not have the opportunity to participate in remote education, even part-time, as they will be in daycare and not available, and not able to participate in class. Regardless of how successful remote education may be, it will not be the same as in-person education and cannot fulfill some of the very important benefits which in-person education provides. Considering the limited risk and the endless benefit of in-person education of our young children, I think it is essential that schools reopen for in-person education. That is not to say that I'm not, that I am opposed to modifications to limit COVID-19 transmission. For example, masks, temperature checks, limiting access to common areas, and to the extent possible, ensuring social distancing whenever possible. Further, I believe it appropriate to offer a remote learning option for parents and students who believe that is the best option for their family, should the district determine that in an appropriate option. Nonetheless, I would like the school district to take every step possible to ensure that children, especially elementary aged children, have the option of a full-time, in-person education option available to them.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Seeing none.
All right, Laurel?
Just, just a comment about, because that was some of the things I was, I was thinking about that from that public comment is, I think what this has taught us all is that school is so much more than just the academics that you do. There's so much to it. There's such great value in the work that occurs and, and the development that children and youth experience by going to classes and, and having that school experience. Everything from their extracurriculars to, to the, the childcare need that it fills for so many families that need to work. And so I don't know if this is somehow we can have discussions with, I don't know who, the Department of Ed, the governor or something, to maybe look at what, what are the hard and fast guidelines that are going to be there? Can we, can we get some of that? Can we, can we get more medical or get more information on medical? What are the risks of transmission? How many throughout, you know, get some of that information to them so that, I, and I know we still have to operate under that, but, you know, can he real, you know, can we emphasize how essential schooling is? And, and for the person, I, you know, I just, that's, it's, it's a tough thing to think of and, and I think that's, we've got to out, we've got to figure, do the benefits outweigh the risks in a variety of different things. But this is something where we as a school board haven't, and, and as a superintendent, that was take, that was taken away from our community and, and, and the state in whole. So I hope that there's variable, you know, variability between the different counties and the different schools that have it. Anyway, I think this is a rambling comment of mine. So I should probably stop talking.
I would, I will say this. I think that this opportunity opened the eyes on all sides. I think our parents got a newfound appreciation of how hard it is to educate children. Especially at home, you might have one to a handful. Whereas you can't imagine what it's like to wrangle, you know, 20, 25 first graders or kindergarteners. And I think at the same time, our teachers and our site administrators have kind of learned how busy home lives are for our students and how hard it, it is for them truly to have those family meals and work on homework and talk about reading. And I think that probably this has kind of forced a lot of families to slow down and to have those conversations and those meals together and kind of refocus as a family. And so I, I hope that that helps guide us as we come back together as that understanding of how hard it is on both sides of the fence and finding a way that makes it work for everyone. Because at the end of the day, our job is to make sure these kids get the best education possible. And that is a real challenge when you're looking at digital learning with limited training from your school staff and, and even students. And so I think that probably this has been a good dry run. And whatever the committee puts together and we ultimately approve, you know, I'm hoping that we really look at those experiences and find a way to meet the needs of all of our families in a way that, you know, I, I hate to hear a family say, this was a complete waste of time. You know, I mean, I think we have some learning to do. I think our families are frustrated with the challenges. And we just need to find a way to, to better serve their needs if, if we have another year like this. Joe?
Richard, I want to thank you for the update. I, I think in my mind, there's no doubt in school, full-time education, we can't beat it. I mean, that's why we all do this. That's why we are the nation we are. That said, we do have limitations thrust upon us. And to the last email we listened to, you know, she had some good points and she's right. You know, transmission rates through kids are, are very low. But the fact is, kids don't teach kids. We have staff in the schools that get exposed to this. So we have to balance the risk across the board. And, you know, the risk and the benefit. And so, Richard, when you guys come back with, you know, the recommendation, if you could, and I know we talked about this briefly a couple of weeks ago. You know, I look at this, one of, one of the big expenses for us as a district is going to be transportation. Because what used to be one bus trip now is probably three trips. And so I would assume that's extra wear and tear on vehicles, extra gas and whatnot. So I'm curious with the committee's recommendations, I don't expect it to be extensive, but maybe we can get AJ's input on ballpark numbers. You know, what, what does this do to us in terms of costs to support the recommendations?
Maybe one of the things to look at is maybe we use transportation for, you know, our most vulnerable, vulnerable populations. And then this is a small enough community that we might not have that as availability for everybody this year.
And that was interesting because Washoe had their reopening on their agenda. And when they pulled up the slide of the bus, that one was like, you, you think about it, but they have like four different designs and they got, you can have 84 seats. And the biggest one had 24 is the biggest number you could get on. So the visual on that was pretty impressive.
Well, if I could, I'd just like to make a comment too is, as a board member, I agree with you guys. I think opening the schools without restrictions is the best. However, as the superintendent has pointed out, we have to abide by the recommendations or the directives from the governor. And I'm not sure how that's going to look. So I think the public may have to consider a hybrid school year, at least to begin with. And so I want everybody to think about that. But I know there's problems with distant learning also. I know that from experience was I had a 11-year-old child in my home during this time. And I saw what, you know, what, how she was able to, I guess, complete her schoolwork and how she did it. And I know that if we're going to have them or the children be in front of a Zoom meeting, depending on their age, it's going to be very difficult for a young child to be in front of a computer for five, six hours a day, listening to these lessons and attending the class remotely. So I think, you know, that's going to be a difficult situation for the kids and the parents. But I am in favor of opening the schools, but I'm not sure it's going to happen.
Any other thoughts, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I appreciate the comments and the thoughts and am surrounded by really smart people, which I'm grateful for because this is gonna, this is gonna challenge us like no other problem that I think I've ever faced. So we'll, we'll try to put our best foot forward and, and we will be anxious to modify our processes until we can improve to the best we can. I just want to, you know, there was, there was a statement that was made in the, one of the public comments. And this is right out of the Declaration of Emergency 022. It states that "social distancing and behavioral change methods were effective in reducing individual and community risk and must remain in effect." So those are conditions that if we didn't have to, if we didn't have to monkey with that, we could just say, y'all come and school's back on. But to do otherwise is, is what's going to be our biggest challenge. And we are open to all suggestions that might make that work as well as it can.
Well, and I want to thank you and all the people who have volunteered. And I know, I think it's Rich, Stacy and Laurel who are representing us on that committee. I hope I didn't miss anybody. So thank you to the three of you. I know it's an extra time commitment, but it's real important work. And so thank you for taking the time to do that and working with the, the district.
Well, and thank the, the teachers and employees that are on there because they're supposed to be on summer vacation. I mean, this is what, we, we know we have to do stuff like this being a board member. But for them to give up their time with their family and give the recommendations that they have. and give the recommendations that they have is, and I just can't thank them enough, because that's a tough one during summer vacation.
I, I think there were a couple on vacation during it. It looked like somebody might have been in a camper.
Can't blame them for that.
To the phone tree people too, because that was staff members too, who were not in the buildings anymore. And that was a suggestion made by the committee and the staff that's not getting paid and is part of the phone tree did that too. So that, there's a lot of people that are trying their hardest to make sure we get the best plan and we do appreciate their time during the summer.
Yeah, I think that's an important part for the public to know that there are a lot of people working behind the scenes to try to figure out the best way to go about opening the schools back up.
All right, thank you. Any final comments?
I, I have one question. I know it shocks people, but, um, I was wondering, since we went to this pass fail, and I hope I'm not getting too far off, but I was curious how many students actually failed. Is there any, during the distant learning? Do we have any figures on that yet?
I don't, I don't have any of that information with us tonight. We could, uh, we could look into that and see what we could learn. And I could send that out, maybe as part of my, uh, weekly update to the board.
We could put that on the, as a future topic if we'd like. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement to amend and restate the district's 403B plan as required by the Internal Revenue Service. This is for possible action. Uh, Mr. Feeling.
Thank you, President Walker. Uh, good evening again, trustees. Um, it is not often that I have an item that has no fiscal impact and is purely for the benefit of our employees. So I just want to soak this up for a second, if you, if you could let me think. Thank you. So, uh, 403Bs, uh, uh, as a, as a retirement vehicle, I've been around for a long time. Um, back in 2009, the, the IRS, um, made it so that every district or every government entity that offered them had to come up with a formalized plan at that time. So it was around before then, but then, uh, this formalized plan document came around. Um, at that time, they said, uh, they're kind of reserved the right to say that in the future, we may provide more, uh, kind of direct guidance as to what this plan needs to look like. And so in 2017, 2018, uh, in their, uh, revenue procedures, they, they said that, um, they were coming out with this very specific guidance, basically a, a kind of a template document to follow what, for what this plan should look like. And it had to be instituted by the, um, authority, the you being the board, um, and approved, um, by resolution by March 30th of 2020. When we were past that date, um, there was kind of a COVID exemption to that. So that was something that I, I've been working on for a while. And then when all, everything kind of fell apart, it got, got put aside because of that exemption. So now, um, it is June 30th. And so that's why we're bringing it to, um, this evening. And, um, the, the plan itself, there's actually two parts to it. And I, I failed to include both the, the second part of it in the plan. So that was this evening, um, the, the extra packet, um, of information about the 403B that, uh, was provided. Um, that's the, the different parts. There's kind of the, the plan and then what's called a special pay plan, but they're both a part of that, together that 403B plan for the district. Um, the only change within the document, um, is, um, allowing, from any of our current practices at all, is allowing what is called a qualified reservist distribution, which has become a, a more common, um, addition. And basically all it does is allow, if we have any staff members that are part of the reserves and they were called active duty, if they're in active duty for more than 179 days, they have the ability to, to take a withdrawal and it's no tax penalty to do it. So it's just kind of a nice, I don't know, I guess, recognition of, of service. So I thought that was, um, a reasonable, um, addition. So, um, the resolution, there is a revised resolution that kind of reflects that there's these two planned parts. Um, and then, and again, that qualified reservist distribution is the only, um, change from anything that we currently do. And that is with your consideration for approval.
Thank you. Any discussion?
AJ, how does that, it's been a long time since I've had to think about that, but if we're paying employees who have to take that leave through a military service, I think the same number of days, 175 days in the military, they're eligible for, I forget what they call it. We call it a TDY, Temporary Duty Assignment Pay. Do there, is there a, I'm assuming a tax implication to our staff that they should be aware of as a result of this?
You know, so since there is no tax penalty on the distribution, um, I, I just, I, I know there's not a penalty. I don't know if the, that money is still, um, would come out taxed, or if it would be taxed at that point. I, I don't know exactly how it works. It, it just seemed like a nice perk. I, I guess, I was more thinking of the situation, you know, if they were in a tough spot and they're away somewhere. Um, I, I don't know exactly how that work. It clearly, if it comes up, and I, I know it has come up once, uh, something similar to this has come up once, at least for my, my payroll supervisor, who's been here about 20 years, um, this type of situation has come up once. So in talking with her about it too, we, we thought it would be a nice option, but it's something that we'll, we'll certainly need to know more about if it does come up to explain what, what this looks like for them and the tax implications.
I'll make a motion then. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the resolution as presented to amend and restate the district's 403B plan as required by the Internal Revenue Service.
Okay, we have a motion by Richard, second by Joe. Any discussion by the trustees? Stacy's recommending graphs for the next presentation. Mr. Feeling, any public comment?
Seeing none.
I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Feeling. Uh, next item on the agenda is item number 13, discussion and possible action on a resolution to approve a final amended budget for fiscal year 2019, 20 to include revisions for certified enrollment, audited fund balance, carryforward amounts, use of contingency funds, and recommended augmentations for specific funds. This is for possible action. Mr. Feeling.
Thank you again, President Walker, Andrew Feeling for the record. Um, so this is kind of a, a strange, uh, kind of quirk in the budgeting process that the, the state, uh, through NRS has set up for us. But what we're talking about this evening is the budget for this current school year, this current fiscal year that ends in seven days. Okay? We're not talking about next year at all. We're talking about right now. Um, and so what, what districts are, are allowed to do is, um, if for whatever reason, there needs to be a change to the budget. And, and after you do your, um, kind of formal amended budget in December, um, while, while we're still amending the budget, it technically is called an augmentation. So we're, we're, I'm presenting you tonight, uh, an augmentation of our budget. And the, the very specific reason for, we, we haven't done this since I think 2017 was the last time I, I came this late with a, like a late augmentation of the budget. And it's very specifically related to, um, the, the COVID, um, mess that we went into toward the end of the school year. So the, we were talking earlier tonight about the nutrition program, um, and the impact that it had. And, and through Herculean effort, um, our nutrition staff just did an amazing job in an incredibly short amount of time, um, making meals available across the community. And, and I think, um, especially in the first weeks, the, there were a lot of thank yous and, and happy folks when I was out at the sites. Just, just folks were so thankful with all this happening so quickly that there was some stability, right? So that was, it was really, I think, a good thing for the community. Um, now, with that, the number of, the total number of meals we serve dropped from what we normally would serve in a given day. Um, and the, the result of having the same number of folks on staff, um, we did have reduced food purchase costs. So that was good. That helped. But even with that, um, serving fewer meals, we generated less revenue. And so what that effectively did is, um, take us from a situation where I thought we were going to come well under budget for what our transfer would be from the general fund to the nutrition services fund. Um, now it looks that we will be well over what that budgeted transfer would be. Um, I truly don't believe, well, and so the budgeted transfer was 305,000, again, from the general fund to the nutrition fund. Um, the budget presented here this evening has, um, a transfer increase of 305,000 to 700,000. I truly don't believe it will be $700,000, but I'm allowing for some cushion to, to come in at the end. I, I think it'll be closer to the, like the high fives, maybe low sixes, still significantly more than what we were planning for. Um, so a, a, as a part of that as well, it's important, um, kind of in, in approving this is, it's actually a transfer of contingency, um, in the general fund. So each year we budget about a million dollars in contingency for things that come up. A number of years back, we used some of those funds to help pay for continuation of some read by three funded positions that when our grant got reduced, we tried to continue some of that. In this case, um, we're transferring contingency to a line item that increases the general fund's ability to, to provide transfers to other funds. And then in the nutrition fund, on the revenue side, we show this larger transfer coming in to help keep the, that fund from going belly up, basically, because it doesn't have the reserves to, to cover that loss. So, um, so there's really kind of, kind of two things happening within this augmentation of the budget. Um, the actual, um, there, there is a real impact on the general fund in doing this. As far as the, the budgeted impact, the budgeted impact on the general fund is zero, because that contingency amount of a million dollars is already included in what we say, here, here's what the, the budget impact is going to be when you approve the amended budget in December. It assumes that that contingency is actually all going to get spent, which it doesn't. Um, so we're just moving, basically moving that expenditure from a contingency line to a transfer line, but the, the bottom line stays the same.
Because we won't be able to, that's half a million dollars that won't roll over.
Exactly. Yes, correct, correct. And, and what I will say, because I kind of related that question and I, uh, knowing Trustee Varner, as I have over the years, I know this is going to come up as a good question. Um, so right now, looking at, at the year end for this current year that ends in, in seven days, um, even with this transfer, I, I, I think the, the overall deficit for the general fund is still going to come in around a half a million dollars. So when, when we look at, um, what was initially improved and not, not including contingency, and we have carryforwards and not including carryforwards, the, the budget approved in December was a deficit of about 1.9 million. And then, um, again, kind of the, um, I never expected to come in there. It's always going to come in better than that. And it, it looked like it was going to come in maybe closer to like 1.3, 1.4. So that, that difference of, of, you know, eight to $900,000, say, really reflects the shutdown of the district from March until the present day, the, the incredible savings in utility costs, incredible savings in supply costs. So fortunately, this is, um, offset to some extent in the bigger picture by some of the savings realized from not having buildings operating, um, all day long and, and buying all the supplies we need to, to, um, to support, uh, the education of our kiddos. So, um, while clearly this is not a good thing, and I provided an article to, if you had a chance to read, you know, that this is not something unique to us by any means. Um, and again, hopefully we'll, we'll learn some other options if we have to continue down this path or, or a pseudo, um, similar path as Mr. Stokes was discussing, um, to try to, um, better manage this. Um, but again, it was, it was certainly a, a learning experience for all of us and some of it was out of our control as far as, um, some of the costs incurred. So, um, with that, I'll, I'll take any, any questions.
I'll come up with something.
Okay, of course, of course.
It looks like, unless I'm wrong, is the deficit for this year 3,660,000? So that was over the 1.9 that had been projected.
That, that is exactly correct. And so, uh, what's important to note about that amount is that includes the 1 million in contingency. So when, when you're passing that budget, we're not really expecting, but it, but when we submit that resolution or pass a resolution, we have to include that contingency line. Um, it also includes, I think, a little over 800,000 or 900,000 in carryforward amounts for, um, school sites and departments that have not spent their entire budget in a year, they're, they're allowed to carry forward a certain percentage, about 20% to the new year. Um, but those amounts generally don't, um, get, I mean, they never all get spent down at the same time. So when I'm, when I'm tracking a budget through the year, each month, I kind of look at trends and, and how things look as compared to prior years. Um, that spend down and carryforward, there's always a little, but it's never the whole amount. Um, so based on the trends and what we're seeing, that's where, where I'll say, you know, it looks more to be like maybe, I'd say between 400 and 600,000 dollars at the, when, when it all comes down and everything finally shakes out, I would expect the, the general fund, fund balance to reduce by, I say about a half a million dollars in, in total.
Any other discussion? Stacy?
So when we did it the first time, we had, we'd estimated the general fund would have been 12 million and it came up to be 14 million. So there was a $2 million plus between when we finalized the, the one budget to now. And that's why we're not being hit as hard.
Right. So, um, the, the important part of that is the, the opening fund balance. So when, when you did the December, this year's, um, school year's December amended budget, the difference between that and the budget you approved in the prior May is that our audit wasn't complete.
Okay.
And so once the audit was complete and we had the actual ending fund balance from the prior year, that became the opening fund balance for the new year, which was about $2 million higher. So your starting point was basically higher. That's where change was.
Good deal. Thank you.
So this is possible action?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the final amended budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020 by approving the resolution and transmittal letter and further instruct the Director of Fiscal Services to file the necessary documents to comply with NRS Chapter 354.
We have a motion by Joe, second by Dawn. Any further discussion from the trustees? Any public comment?
Seeing none.
I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And I'll just say that the hits keep coming this year, Mr. Feeling. We, we want some better news next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I shouldn't speak too soon, right?
No kidding.
Next item on the agenda is item number 14, approval of the consent agenda. This is for possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
All right, we have a motion from Joe, second by Laurel. Any discussion from the trustees? Any public comment?
Seeing none.
I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 15, informational items. This is for discussion only. Any, uh, any informational items we'd like to request from Mr. Stokes or staff? Seeing none. Item 16, requests for future agenda topics. Uh, we have, Trustee Varner raised the question about the, um, success during pass fail, student success during pass fail. You know, one item that we might look at, and I don't know if this would be from Rich or possibly even Ryan. Last week I attended the, um, or possibly even Ryan. Last week, I attended the foundations meeting and Casey was talking about, she met with somebody who does their taxes and she was talking about board approval for purchases. I think that probably just an explanation of what our liability is when it comes to foundations and what our role is in that process would be beneficial because if the trustees aren't sure, I'm, and I'm guessing the foundation wasn't sure because Casey said they were a little bit shocked by some of those things. I think it's just kind of a nice thing to kind of get clarified a little bit, if that makes sense. Any other future agenda topics? Seeing none. We will adjourn at 9:30.
We have a $9 million bake sale.